Good evening and welcome to the regular, excuse me, regular meeting of the Worcester City Council this March 4th, 2019. It's after 7:30 PM. Next meeting will be Monday, March 18th. If you wouldn't miss, Apollo, please call the roll.
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bastancic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
And we're all here, which means we have a quorum. The agenda will remain as presented. At this time, I ask you to stand and join members of City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes of February 19th, 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Mr. Sanders, second by Mr. Silvestri to approve the minutes of February 19th. Would you please call the roll on the motion to approve or not the roll?
We usually do it by voice.
Yeah, it's a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, Mayor, your turn. Welcome, and hopefully you can warm us up on this chilly Monday evening.
Well, hopefully I've got some information that will do just that here. So, thank you, Mr. Byten Dyke, and welcome, council members. Glad to see everybody. I want to talk about a couple of things here tonight. First, we have an opportunity, and I don't know if any of you have actually had a chance to do it or not, but the county is doing this Wayne onward, the comprehensive plan for the county of Wayne County. There are a couple of meetings left in our area that if you haven't done it, it might be worth taking an opportunity to do it. Tomorrow night, Tuesday, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Wayne County Administration Building, they're having a session where you actually work on how you want our county to grow and give your suggestions to that, including the city of Worcester and the surrounding parts of Wayne County. And then on Thursday night, up at the high school library, from 5:30 to 7:30 is the last session in this area. So, it's really a good opportunity for us as leaders of our city, which is the county seat of Wayne County, to be involved in the process. So, if you have an opportunity to, please try to make it to one of those sessions. Now onto the stuff that hopefully will warm you up. There have been two things that came out today. Going to start with this one first, sort of the gray-blue color. It is from Site Selection Magazine. This is a group that we've heard of in the past. They have chosen the Worcester Metropolitan again to be one of the top micropolitans in the nation. They've said that we are number two in the nation. The last two years, we've been at number three, and so this year, they are again saying that we're one of the top micropolitans in the nation. Findlay, Ohio is number one, and the city of Worcester is number two, and Ashland is also in there. And then towards the back, I gave you the whole breakdown according to micropolitans. And they do this, this is more of a year-by-year type of look at a community and how many new prospects you have in. So, it's different from the Polycom that we talked about in the first meeting in February. They do more of a long-term look back close to 20 years on the Polycom, where Site Selection is a one-year. So, nice stuff. The one thing I really enjoyed about this, this is on their website, so it's going wherever websites go. But if you look at the very front, that's a picture of our square. And yet then the next, if you turn the page, it says Findlay, Ohio. So, we actually got our picture on the front, but yet Findlay's the number one. So, I did enjoy seeing that there. So, nice kudos to our community again, a very high honor and selection of saying that we're moving in the right direction as far as trying to bring in new businesses and economic development into our area. So, I'll let you look at that, but I'm going to switch over to the next, and this one came out today also. And this is from the IBM Watson Group, who have taken over the top 100 hospitals in the nation. And they have again identified Worcester Community Hospital as one of the top hospitals in our country. This is the fifth time that we have won this award. It is probably one of the highest prestige awards that I've been acquainted with since I've been involved with the hospital. It's determined solely on metrics, so it's not something that you pay to be reviewed on. It doesn't, you can't try to politic getting on the list. It's all through the metrics. And so, to me, it's a true appraisal of our hospital. And you'll see, we're under the medium community hospital listing on the sixth of the seventh page there. So, when this just came out, it's truly a shot in the arm for the people that make our hospital go, the administrators, the board, the nurses, doctors, and every single person that works there, because they all play into making our hospital great. So, two really nice awards for our community and a chance to weigh in on how we're going to develop as a whole in Wayne County. So, three good things to present to you tonight. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Petitions, Mr. Scavelli, you said, or let us know we had a petition to vacate an alley?
Yes, we have a, an alley vacation petition. It turns out that everyone that is a土地owner has consented to that petition. We gave the need for a full period based upon that. We will be requiring legislation for council for next week on that alley vacation.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll expect to see that at the next meeting. Appreciate that. No communications from the public, so that will get to number, row number five. No committee reports or public hearings, so that turns to number six. No unfinished business, so we start with our new business and legislation for this meeting. First one is ordinance number 2019-06. Would you please, Mr. Apollo, read the title?
Ordinance number 2019-06, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with the Worcester Rotary Foundation, Inc., for real estate owned by the city and not presently needed for any municipal purpose.
And this will be presented by Mr. Sanders, and it is slated for three readings. Mr. Sanders, I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Worcester Rotary Foundation that has been, they've been providing the flags, curb-side flags throughout the various holidays throughout the year, they've been doing that, I don't even, I'm not sure how many years, it's been quite a while, but it's a growing program. And like all things, they have outgrown the space that they're currently at, and so they have been looking for some new space. In conversation with the city, the building at 1171 Mechanicsburg Road that's currently owned by the city of Worcester is the old PPM, the building where PPM used to have their offices and have their primary inventory, and with the new facility that we acquired from the state, the old ODOT garage, and with them moving everything down there and all the new building and addition that's gone on there, the right side of the, or the south side of the building, as you look at the one photo, the aerial photo that was on our desks here this evening, that office space is roughly 1,615 square feet. It would be perfect for what they need to do. They need to store the flags, put the poles, they need to do, you know, maintenance on the flags, replace them, you know, fix the poles, replace the poles, and so at that point, that's, that was, the space would be perfectly used for that. It was office space, so the ceilings aren't tall, so we can't use it for normal storage for PPM items, and thus the reason for the request. Seems like a pretty good use for the space. It seems like a nice collaboration between us and one of our premier service organizations in the community. And I guess with that, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders is their second. Second by Mr. Bastancic. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Bastancic.
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Sanders.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders is their second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Ansel. Any questions?
Is the, Mr. Sanders, has other, have other organizations been offered free space as well? I know the Catholic Church has some storage needs. AAUW book sale currently has space donated and has needs. Has anybody else in the community been offered free space at the city?
I'm going to have to defer that question to the administration.
Yeah, I can answer a little bit of that. What we did, first of all, this was where the utilities used to be, so they outgrew, and that's what we put down at the old ODOT garage. So, PPM, they moved equipment and all the high bay storage. That southern end is off, was old office space that about the most we could put in was a couple, like mower decks and things like that. So, it's that old office space that we're looking to lease to them. We pretty much did the same thing we did with the Exchange Club when they had, they currently have a lease up at Crystal Market Park for the cabin. So, basically, in exchange just for general maintenance and upkeep, they get use of that cabin. This is very, very similar.
But nobody else was contacted? It was just a?
No, there was, this was a specific need of a service project that is, where they put all those flags out, you know, and beautify our city, and felt this was a good marriage to give them some space, and that project definitely benefits the city as well.
What, is it, so they put out the flags for free, so that's, there's not, they don't charge to put the flags out to the citizens?
As far as I know.
They do.
There's an annual fee.
It's a money-making.
It's like $35.
So, it's a money-making thing for the Rotary Club?
This is one.
Is, excuse me.
There's also Representative Rotary here, President, if you want to ask some of those specific questions about what the money's used for.
Well, no, they do philanthropic activities with their money, but I just know there's a charge for it, and this is city property. Is there additional liability having the traffic for, you know, outside people that are not employees on the property?
No, they're required to have insurance, which they, which they will, just like Exchange Club is required to do the same thing. And we also ran the lease by our property liability insurance, and they were fine.
Good, good. I have no further questions.
That's what I meant. Mr. Cavan?
I was just reading through here, and it says that the pay for improvements, is there a dollar amount attached to that that we know of?
We're not doing any improvements.
Right.
The Rotary was committed to doing some improvements to just make it more conducive to their use.
But it's not a complete overhaul, they're not going to tear down the side of the building and replace it or anything like that?
What, rat ass?
I wonder, I think, Mr. Sanders, you brought up the ceiling height and how that made it basically useless for storing some of the larger equipment for PPM. I just wonder, is this going to be a problem for Rotary to store the flags? Because I actually am part of the program, I have a flag in my yard, I should say, and I know they're very tall flag poles, so I'm just wondering if that would be, maybe they need to, if it's a drop ceiling, remove it or?
We've, we actually went and visited the site with several members of the Rotary that are responsible for the program, so they could make sure it was going to be conducive to their needs before we proceeded to this point.
Okay.
Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Bastancic.
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019-06 passes. We'll turn to a resolution number 2019-19. It'll be presented by Mr. Silvestri, and it is a budgeted item. Before we get to you, Mr. Silvestri, I will turn to Ms. Apollo, Apollo, and ask her to read the title.
Resolution number 2019-19, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the purchase of certain materials for the water treatment plant.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. I had the privilege of speaking with our new utilities manager about this legislation, and I wanted to make sure it wasn't confusing. This piece of legislation is for the lime only. It's for the pebble lime that we use to maintain the quality of our drinking water within the city of Worcester. It's used in the softening process. It removes the hardness of the water, and it improves, I guess you could say, the taste of the water. And this is a budgeted item, so three readings are not required. There are going to be more chemicals come down the pike, more needs that exceed the $50,000 threshold that's going to require council approval. But for this, this evening, it's our contract, and I was pleased, just in my conversations with Mr. Coe, that he's looking at changing the contract just a little bit to align it with the calendar year, to make it a little easier. So, he's working to change some of those terms and better align them with other city needs that are similar in nature. So, he was sorry that he couldn't be here this evening. He had a special family event, and he was heading off to that, and I told him that we would stand in and handle any questions that anyone might have. So, I'll do my best if there are specific questions, but those are the details. If not, I would.
Just, I'm curious, how much more is this from last year's purchases?
You know, I don't have that number right here.
It doesn't, I'm just curious.
I know typically, typically we use last year's numbers for the current, you know, Joel?
It was a little under $200,000 last year. We've been told, actually, our contract, previous contract, had a provision where we could extend it. If they're willing to stay with that same price, and they said, no, the price is going up, so they weren't willing to extend it, so it's going to go up a little bit, just inflation. This is the amount of value.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Seeing none, would you, do you have a motion?
I move for adoption.
Motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further questions? Obviously, we need this, otherwise everyone will be calling Culligan or someone else to soften our water. Seeing none, would you please call the roll?
Cavan.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Bastancic.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Resolution number 2019-19 passes. That brings us to resolution number 2019-20. And when you know it, you know, the Chiefs, Salee and Murphy got a new play toy last time we met. Now, Mr. Denning is here wanting a new play toy, so anyways, actually, I know we get the utmost use out of our equipment, especially at PPM, and I know a lot of those dump trucks are, go well into two decades or more, with thousands of hours on their motors, and your crew does a great job of getting them, bringing every bit of useful life out of them, so. But it is a big play toy, too, at that price, a big tonka truck. Would you please read the title?
Resolution number 2019-20, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to purchase a dump truck in accordance with the capital plan for 2019.
Ms. Warden, this is your resolution, and it is budgeted, so I turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, President Byten Dyke. So, essentially, the city would like to purchase a new dump truck to be used for road maintenance, leaf collection, snow and ice removal throughout the city. The new truck will be equipped with a dump bed, a snowplow, and a salt spreader. This, again, as President Byten Dyke said, is a budgeted item. The estimated total cost is $170,000, and they plan to put this out for the lowest and best bidder, which I understand will not necessarily, I had a phone call this evening, somebody asked if this would be given priority to perhaps a, an Ohio dealer or an Ohio vendor, and we go with the lowest and best bidder, so that might answer Mr. Breeden's question. The purchase of this new dump truck, it will replace a 1996 International Dump Truck that needs to be taken offline and sold. The International Dump Truck from 1996 will be sold using govdeals.com as soon as the new truck is delivered. The auction site that the truck will be sold on is how many of the city vehicles and equipment have been sold in the past, and it historically brings in the most value back to the city. The 96 Dump Truck has many deficiencies, according to Mr. Denning. They would need to be addressed in order to keep it in good operational standards. A few of the major deficiencies included, or include a rusted through cab support, rusted frame rails causing the dump bed to not rest evenly, a worn hydraulic pump in need of replacement, and a new dump bed installed to eliminate materials and debris from falling off the truck. And as you can see, that sounds like it's probably becoming a danger to the public and people on the roadways. So, this will keep the average age of our dump truck fleet between 12 and 14 years, and it decreases the amount of maintenance dollars and downtime we spend each year. By replacing some of our older year dump trucks in our fleet at a consistent rate, it allows the city to budget at a more regular basis. So, with that, because this is budgeted, I'd like to motion that we approve.
Okay, motion to adopt by Ms. Warden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Any other comments?
Any questions?
Just a quick one for Kurt. Kurt, I know it depends on the condition of the truck, but is there a general range of values we usually get for used dump trucks?
Yeah, that, that truck will probably bring about $2,500 to $3,000.
Is that what the going rate of scrap steel?
I never know where they go.
I'd like to add one thing, while the new big dump trucks a nice piece of equipment to have, that doesn't preclude people like Kurt from getting out the shovel and going up the hard way. And I just wanted to give some kudos to our PPM guys, Kurt himself, when there was some snow, somebody was. Somebody was snowed in here a few weeks ago downtown and couldn't get AAA, couldn't get anybody to come. They said, call the city, so Kurt picked up a shovel, went out, shoveled this lady out so she could get her car out downtown, so. And in addition to that, we had another resident called, that lives on East Bowman, who was also out shoveling one morning when the plow trucks were going by, and she said it was, when the driver saw her there, they made a point to slow down, move out of the way, to not throw snow, and not put it into her driveway she was trying to shovel out, and she also contacted us to let us know how much she appreciated our PPM crew as well. So, I just want to give some kudos for that.
Thank you.
All right. Anything further? I would say 22 years is a long time for a truck that works 12 months a year, good part of it has salt in its bed, and then other times probably hot patch in its bed, so 22 years, I think we got our money's worth out of it. If we can get 22 years out of this one, we'll be doing a good job. Anything else? Would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2019-20 passes. So, you and the Chiefs can see whose horn is louder on their new tonka toys, okay? This brings us to resolution number 2019-21. It'll be presented by Mr. Bastancic. Is budgeted, so it will not require three readings. That will require Mr. Apollo to read the title.
Resolution number 2019-21, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for furnishing by.
Tumulus.
Tumulus material.
All right. Mr. Bastancic, the floor is yours.
Okay, well, thank you. With warmer weather hopefully approaching soon, it's going to be time to do some paving, and what this will do is let us bid on about roughly 4,500 ton of asphalt, spending approximately $300,000. This is a slight increase over last year, where we spent about $250,000 on 4,200 ton. We have a little more aggressive paving operation going into summer. Now, this asphalt is just for what we will do ourselves with our paving crew and not with any of the, will not be, any asphalt will not be going to any of the contractors. We'll be doing some of the longer streets later on in the summer. It's pretty straightforward. I think there's enough of us that have fallen into some of the giant potholes since the snow's been melting, that a lot of people are going to be looking forward to this.
Well, I did see your crew out on Beaver the other day, trying to fill the potholes, and I know this time of year, it's almost a futile task in a few days. I'm sure most of that stuff will come out, because it's hard to get that dry and get all the debris out, but at least they made the road somewhat more passable than before.
I have a customer at the restaurant, every time he sees me, he asks, asks me about the potholes in a joking manner. You know, that's what we get a lot of requests to fulfill.
These last few winters, we haven't had to move as much snow, but it's been rough on the potholes, with the heaving and thawing and not much you can do, so. Do you have a motion for us?
Yes, as this is a budgeted item, I move to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Bastancic, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Silvestri. Any further comments? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Warden.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Bastancic.
Yes.
Resolution number 2019-21 passes. And our final piece of legislation, resolution number 2019-22, will be presented by Mr. Myers. It is slated for three readings. Before I get back to you, Mr. Myers, I will have Ms. Apollo read the title.
Resolution number 2019-22, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to enter into an agreement with the Wayne County Humane Society for cat control services within the city of Worcester.
Okay. Mr. Myers, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, President Byten Dyke. This is the arrangement we've had with the Humane Society for a number of years to help with the cap, control the cat population within the city limits. I know there was a late memorandum from Attorney Silvestri, or, excuse me, about the agent, not Sylvester, Scavelli, Sylvester's here.
The other tenant.
Yeah, the other, yeah, the smart man in the room, okay.
I never get any pizzas from the guys.
Did you want to discuss the humane agent addition to the ordinance?
If you were willing to, I can.
Yes, please.
So essentially, the coronavirus code allows for the Humane Society to appoint a humane agent. And that humane agent, if they're gonna operate with a municipal corporation, has to be approved by the mayor. So we have developed an agreement that, actually, we have one more change to make, too, which I was speaking about with Attorney Hall right before this meeting. Oh, sorry. That we have one more change to, when we start over, but I think.
We got your footpart. Thanks.
So we have one more change to make to that agreement, that essentially, they will appoint our property maintenance inspector to be the humane agent. That when the current property maintenance inspector was hired, that was discussed with him as part of his job duties. He understands that will be just a regular part of his job. He won't be paid any extra for that. It'll just be what he does. And as those cases come along, he will inspect them. He will have to consult with the Humane Society at least once a month, and that's stated in the contract. And he, he will need to be responsive to them, but he will be a city employee. And that's essentially the agreement. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I was just curious, did that idea not come out of one of the community meetings that we had?
It may have. I'm unaware.
I'm glad to see that it was followed up on and that it came to fruition, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Scavelli wasn't around back then. Hopefully, he'll be around many years from now.
Hopefully.
As long as that dump truck.
Hope them not sold for scrap. Thank you for clearing that up. I appreciate that. Would the Humane Society, we have Representative for the Humane Society here, a couple of them this evening? Would you like to say something this evening?
Yes, it was exactly as we discussed, we're happy that we were able to.
Thank you. You never knew you'd have to be associate producer of the council meeting, did you, Mr. Scavelli?
And as you had indicated, it was the, the result of one of our meetings we had last year where it was discussed the need to have a humane agent. So we worked periodically with the administration to arrive at a mutually agreeable contract regarding the humane agent issue, so we're, we're pleased with the contract and we're happy we're able to get that resolved.
Anyone have any questions for the Humane Society representative today? Thank you for coming.
Well done. Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
I know this was an issue last year when this was discussed, and it seems like we've come to a mutually acceptable resolution, and I'm happy to endorse this, and I'd like to move for suspension of the rules, to move this to third and final reading this evening.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Myers. Is there a second? I, I think I saw Mr. Ansel's hand go up once and then again, so we'll credit Mr. Ansel as seconding that. Would you please call the role on the suspension of the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Myers.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Myers. Is there a second?
Second.
I was looking to you, Mr. Bastancic. Mr. Silvestri jumped in there. So seconded by Mr. Silvestri. Any other discussion? Mr. Cavan?
My only concern was, I would be hopeful that we didn't stretch our maintenance property agent too far because there is certainly a need for, for that as well. That is my only concern with it.
Right. Well, it'll be nice that now we do have ability now to prosecute neglect and abuse, animal abuse circumstances again.
We, our property inspection agent, I happen to know him, he's a young man who was at Community Action for a number of years. He's a, he's a very sharp young man and high energy. I think he'll, he'll probably do a good job, and I'm sure that our administration will keep an eye on him. But I'm, I have high confidence that he'll be able to serve us well.
Okay. Seeing nothing further, would you please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2019 dash 22 passes. That brings us to a miscellaneous portion. And oddly, Mr. Ansel didn't have anything before us tonight. So seeing that, we'll give you the last first word here.
Well, I want to also compliment the accomplishments of the Site Selection Award and then also the IBM Watson Health Award recognizing Worcester Community Hospital. You know, we can't ever take for granted these major milestone accomplishments, even though we seem to repeat year after year. It's an incredible recognition and an acknowledgement of our community's success and also the success of the hospital as an operating entity. So continued respect and acknowledgement for a job well done. And hopefully, this can continue to be maintained on a long-term basis because, again, this is a differentiator when you compare Worcester to other communities. And it put, certainly puts us in a premier class as a city. So thank you for all of the staff for the hard work on each of those awards. That's all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Cavan, it's nice to see you hale and hearty here tonight.
Feeling a little better, thank you.
Good.
To go along with what Mr. Ansel had said, I too am hopeful that we can continue the tradition. And I'm gonna jump back to the property maintenance person. At one time, I know we had talked about adding another, as, as far as having two with that. I don't know if that's still the plan or not, but we're adding responsibility to the first fella. So I would just, you know, I'm hopeful that he can handle it. I suppose, you know, I don't want to borrow trouble, you know, if something's not happened, but we'll just have to keep an eye and make sure that we can get some of the issues settled that we continue to see. Thank you.
Mr. Bastancic?
Nothing more at this time.
Okay. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. Just to clarify earlier ordinance that I did vote to support, by the way, with the Rotary use of the facility building out of PPM. I'm a supporter of Rotary. My dad and grandfather are both past presidents of the Rotary organization here in Worcester. I, my concern was singling out, again, a good cause, the organization does good work in our community, but singling out one versus many others to be able to have a free space in a city building. Again, I do support it and just concerned of the precedent that we might set. The other issue that I'd like to bring up and to, to city council to consider potentially here in the next few weeks, this winter has been unusually harsh and it's caused some unexpected deterioration on our roads. And with, as we mentioned earlier, I'd like to consider postponing the $1.5 million project on the south side of the square and be, due to the unexpected decay of the roads, put that money towards road repair. Something we could consider doing to keep the roads in good condition for our travelers of the city. And we could put that project off maybe until the following year. So something I'd like y'all to consider before we get together again next. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes, I did just want to say that it's, I'm proud to be able to say that we are more consistent in our winning of the top 100 hospital award and the award name itself. But whether it be Thompson or Watson, I will take it. And it was just, it was encouraging to see the, on a, on a second note, the picture of the full downtown square. And even though we weren't first in the award, as the mayor pointed out, I guess we get number one for best picture, best downtown picture that is. So thank you for all your efforts also on the PPM side. I know there's been a lot of work done, and even times like this when there's not plowing, we see trucks out salting, so thank you for staying ahead of things. It is much appreciated. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Warden, we will give you the last word, so the exclamation point on the evening.
No pressure. I really don't have much to say, but I, I would like to reference the, the photo that Mr. Silvestri just brought up from, if I could borrow your copy here, from, yeah, from Site Selection Magazine. Are you down there? I might be as well. I'm sure we all are. I, I just wanted to say in this, maybe piggybacks on Mr. Myers' final comment as well about the southeast quadrant of the square. And then back to the state of the city, Mr. Mayor, you commented that you've heard nothing but good things about the, the construction and the new quadrant that has been placed down there. It'll be really interesting to see what the new quadrant looks like at Window Wonderland. I think it might hide all the people over there. Not, not like a gazebo where it's open around all the sides and, and from the top. But that was just something that I thought, and I have heard many more than good things about it. So I, I would encourage you to perhaps put your ear to the ground and hear what other people are saying about what's going on in the city. That's all. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President?
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Ansel, second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.